On the eastern side, just north of the trash enclosure, giving us the seven parking spaces.
Okay.
So that, I'm not sure if you guys may or may not have that, but we'll make sure that gets submitted with the photometrics, with the turnaround of the truck. And then as far as the masonry wall goes, is there a standard? Does it have to be block, split face, brick? Does it need to match the building? Just out of my curiosity, so I know because I'm the ones that have to draw it.
Sure. Generally, matching the building would be preferred.
Alright.
And we can work with you. There's some standards in the front yard. It may have to go down to four feet, different things like that, but we could work through those issues with you.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah. And then as far as the turnaround or the curb cut there, I don't think it would be an issue getting that drawn with the work with the civil engineer and I'll work with the engineering on getting that taken care of. So everything that staff is recommending, I don't think we have any issues with, so.
So not to put you on the spot, you mentioned concerns about fire approach. Is there anything that the recommendation that would actually, since we're talking about it?
No, because the site's so small. I mean, you can't, it's not like you can shift one way or the other to make something better. I think shifting it probably makes it worse.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just going to be a tight site.
Okay. It's small enough the attack could happen from West Main Cross or the parking lot to the west?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the fuel trucks coming onto the site and how you would see their flow through here?
Well, for me, I think what we'd end up doing is, you know, there is a lot of room. The trucks are not very big, so they can do a T-turnaround going up beside the building to the east side of it, and T-turnaround to use that entrance one in, one out there to get turned around and come back. Because I think that they'll be delivering fuel more off hour than on hour, and we can make sure with the tight site that it is that we can deliver off hour. So, so the owner actually owns their own fuel delivery system, so they can set the timeframe whenever they want.
Yeah. So are the, go ahead. Are the fuel delivery trucks not the semi that we would all think of?
I believe they are that larger size, but they're not like a full 55-foot, you know, semi truck, so they'll be able to easily turn around in this area.
Matt, I'm a little, we didn't apparently have site maps that show some of the stuff that you have, such as landscaping. I don't have that in the packet.
This is, this is their landscaping plan, right?
Oh, okay.
That's included on there. But they didn't do a specific separate landscape plan, I don't believe.
But the site plan doesn't show how they're handling drainage, what's new asphalt, concrete, what's new, what's coming out. They don't show the drive-through lane coming around the building and those sort of things. I think we ought to have a proper site plan before we approve this.
It looks like we got architectural drawings, not site plan.
Yeah. We don't have a trash enclosure? Well, they've got a pad, but not an enclosure. Do you know if those trees are on your property or if they're on the neighbor's property? There's a lot of trees there just on the west side of the house.
I am, I am not 100% sure.
Because I'd like to know where the wall is going to go to. Is it, are those trees all coming down to put it on the property line? Or is the wall going to sit inside the property line to preserve the trees or that sort of thing?
My vote would be save the trees, obviously. So, I mean, if we were going to do anything, it'd be just to the east side of those, of the dots which would be landscaping there. We'd put it close up to there. Because if we're, I would put it right on the edge of the paving that's there.
Staff looked at it. You can tell the, it's offset a little bit. So when we looked at it on the county auditor's website, our belief was that the trees are on the proposed site, not on the residential site. So the applicant would most likely have control of whether the trees stayed or go. And that would obviously be a preference so that the trees stay.
And you do have a drive-through going around the building, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. There's no indication of that. There's no, you know, how are you keeping the traffic away from the building? How are you making the turn around the corner? Those issues. I would like to see this be resubmitted as a proper site plan that we can look at and review without all, and incorporate the things that we're discussing here as points. I would be in favor of tabling this until we have the proper site plan. Would that create a significant issue for you if we tabled this for another month?
As the owner, I can't, I mean, I'm not the owner, so I can't answer that, but I mean, I know my drawings are completely done, so. So we're ready to submit as soon as you guys are okay with this, but I agree with the fact that there are some things. I mean, I have a full civil plan. I don't know why this wasn't submitted. I didn't submit the package personally, the owner did. So I'm here in his stead because he's out of town or unavailable. So I'm not, like I said, I have the full civil plan stamped. I don't understand why you don't have it.
How about we move this to the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Eric, can you go make some copies of the plan that you have so that we can view that? Because if we can address it today, because I, since engineering and the staff have already reviewed it, I doubt there's any huge changes. So if we can just get a copy of that real quick, and then that way we can maybe address it today rather than waiting a month. Perfect. Okay. So we will just hold on this item and move to the next item, and then go from there. Alright, so we're going to move to item number two. Application for Site Plan Review SP-05-2025 filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review an 800-square-foot cold storage addition for a contractor office at 545 Sixth Street. CPC staff comments.
This request is located on the south side of Sixth Street between Cherry Street and Bank Street. The parcel is Zoned C1 Local Commercial. Along Sixth Street is a pocket of C1 Local Commercial. To the south is the neighborhood of R3 Small Lot Residential. It is not located within the 100-year floodplain. The site was a car wash and was previously converted into a contractor shop. The applicant has submitted a site plan for an addition to the structure. They would like to construct an additional 800-square-foot garage behind the existing building. This garage, this garage would have a 12-by-six, 12-foot by 14-foot overhead door to access the space with an eve height of 16.5. There would also be a service door to enter the building. The applicant indicated that this would be for his work vehicle. The current setup of the space does not leave enough room for him to park his vehicle on-site. Being behind the existing building only leaves five feet of setback on the rear and side yard to the east. The applicant indicated he would be pursuing a variance for these reductions. Abutting the site to the east is the railroad track, but to the south is a residential property. The abutting neighbor provided documentation to staff saying they were in favor of allowing this addition. Staff still might suggest a six-foot or eight-foot fence moving forward to provide extra security to the site and help screen the neighbors. Staff recommends approval of the application for site plan SP-05-2025 filed by Elite Contracting.
Engineering?
Uh, no real comment. Access is from the existing parking lot. It's pretty much a cold storage, so no water or sewer service, so approval of the site.
Fire prevention?
Just want to make sure they get all the proper permits for construction.
Very good, thank you. So the staff recommends approval of application for Site Plan Review SP-05-2025 filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review an 800-square-foot cold storage addition for a contractor office at 545 South Sixth Street with the following condition: Receive a setback variance from BZA. So I think my kind of main question is related to the kind of discussion point on a fence for that area. Obviously, we do typically like screening, but I'm not always a big fan of fencing. So I guess, are you interested in fencing for a security purpose, or could we look at maybe doing a landscape buffer?
So there is no, on the backside there, there is no grass. There isn't any grass on the back. It's all asphalt. So speaking with the neighbor to the south there, and also to the neighbor to the west, which is the other building, the old Waxler building there, we would have a fence come from the corner of, the south corner of the Waxler building, down to our corner, and then over to the new addition, and then around. And preferably what I would like would be just your simple dog-eared eight-foot privacy fence put up there. With the good side, of course, facing the neighbors. A, because that's the right thing to do to the neighbors, and B, for security reasons, I'm not giving the pickets across there for people to climb over. So yeah, I would definitely want to run a fence down and around. It just doesn't allow for any kind of shrubbery or anything like that. There, like I said, the whole property is asphalt, except for a little bit on Sixth Street there where we mow and whatnot, so.
Okay, perfect. Now, I think that that sounds appropriate for that area. Very good. Questions from the commission? Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak for or against this item? And those of you sitting on the side that I'm sitting, you have to stand up or raise your hand or something because you hide from me over there. So I don't want to ignore people. Alright, very good.
I have some questions on that. Your eve height is 16 feet. What's the eve height of the existing building? Is that about?
Eleven.
Eleven, so you're going to be about five feet above that?
Yeah.
How are you handling the drainage off of that roof?
That'll just be splash blocked. It's all asphalt now, so there's no increase in runoff.
But how are you going to direct that to your catch basins versus onto the neighbor's property?
It'll be routed to flow up into the existing asphalt. I mean, they'll be directed that way. Even if we have to come around the corner of the building a little bit, we can do that.
Run a downspout on the side or whatever situation, whatever it takes to direct it that way. So the gutter coming across with the downspout along the side to direct it in that direction. Of course, we don't want to direct it to our neighbor's driveway, or even the other five feet we have there. We are setting the building back so that they don't match up. We are setting the building back off the sideline. That way we can leave enough gutter on the side to, six-inch gutter, six-inch downs, those types of things to carry that load through there.
Well, I assume that everything now asphalt-wise drains to those catch basins. Not, but I think when you're building this addition, you're cutting something off there. And I think you're going to be dumping water onto their yard, unless you maybe would pipe it to the catch basin.
Yep. Yeah, at this point, we were planning on just directing along the side of the building towards those catch basins, but we can take a look at that and we can work with Jeremy to make sure we have those details covered.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Just one comment. The, with approval of this, you do, you still do not have permission to do outside storage within that district. That's a separate conditional use. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we can't, we can't see, you know, a lot of items stored out here. That's a separate conditional use.
So that would need to be filed with?
Permission to do that would come through planning commission.
Okay.
So what that means is, you know, things should be stored within the buildings. If, if you do not store things in the buildings, that would be a violation of the code. Just, just letting you know so that you can plan for that.
So for trailers or whatever the situation is, is what you're touching on?
Yeah, trailers or lumber or anything like that.
Okay.
Yep, and zoning can give you kind of the full guidelines around that. So what it may end up being is, if you're planning to store a lot of things out there, then work with zoning, and we can look at doing the conditional use to add outdoor storage, and then that would require maybe some additional fencing.
Right. And that would be, you know, and we can kind of touch on that once we kind of figure this out.
Yeah. Alright, I will motion to approve application for Site Plan Review SP-05-2025 filed by Elite Contracting LLC to review an 800-square-foot cold storage addition for a contractor office at 545 Sixth Street with the condition of receive setback variances from BZA.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I keep wanting to say Jacob whenever you're ready, but Matthew, whenever you're ready.
Dan Klinger?
Aye.
Jackie Schroder?
Aye.
Rob Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Muir?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Eric, do you have the documents? We can go back to item one real quick.
This is a site plan that we have in our packet, but to me, it's not a complete site plan that tells, shows what the construction is doing.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I was looking at it again when we were going out. This isn't as much as I thought it was on here, so.
It is helpful, but yeah, still probably not.
It shows the extra two parking spaces.
That is progress. Yeah, helpful. Yeah, I think we would like to see the drive paths and everything.
And I'm fine if we table this for another month. I mean, we need it. You guys need more information. I want the city to make sure they're comfortable with what they're approving, so I've got no problems with that.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate that. I will go ahead and motion to table application for Site Plan Review SP-04-2025 filed by R&amp;R Tacker LLC. Am I getting in trouble for something? No? Okay.
It's fine. I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Alright, the item is tabbed. We'll be in contact.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, going to item number three. Application for Site Plan Review SP-06-2025 filed by Schroder Commercial Properties LLC to construct a 12,263-square-foot building to be located on Lot 5 of East Melrose Business Park on Keith Parkway. CPC staff comments.
This request is located on the east side of Keith Parkway, the parcel is Zoned C2 General Commercial. It is in an area of mostly C2 General Commercial with some I1 Light Industrial to the north. It's not located within the 100-year floodplain. The City of Finlay Land Use Plan designates the property as Regional Commercial. The site is currently vacant. The owner of the property operates Friends Office Supply, which abuts the property to the east. The applicant is proposing a new 12,000-square-foot building on the site. This would include warehouse storage and a small office and bathroom on-site. They have provided a parking lot that would have 12 spaces with one designated handicap. This is below the required parking for the C2 District, one per 375 square feet of building. They were also short on landscaping for the C2 District. They have provided the required four trees for the parking perimeter and three trees to meet the C2 District requirement for the lot size. Only 12 shrubs have been provided. The foundation plantings are, let's see, requires two shrubs per 12 lineal feet for 81 shrubs total. The parking lot needs one shrub per five lineal feet, or 33 shrubs. All the landscaping has been provided along the west side of the site. There is a space on the south side to add landscaping. This would better separate the lot with the parking area for the Hancock Public Health Building to the south. Staff recommends approval for Site Plan SP-06-2025 filed by Schroder Commercial Properties to construct a 12,000-square-foot building to be located on Lot 5 of the East Melrose Business Park on Keith Parkway with the condition of working with HRPC to approve a landscape plan.
Engineering?
Even though this is a pretty, I mean, a decent-sized project, it's really simple engineering side. They got a curb cut kind of off Keith Parkway there, which will help with the maneuverability across that whole site, especially with trucks coming in and out of there. The building is just has a water service, three-quarter inch, and then a sanitary service. One question I have, and I think you're under the threshold, but do you need fire suppression for that?
We do not.
You're under, okay. That's why I was thinking you were under on that. But really, no concerns with it on that. Using regional detention pond, doesn't need any MS4, so recommend approval.
Fire prevention?
We just want to make sure they get permits for construction.
Thank you. So the recommendation by staff to the commission is, "Staff recommends approval of the application for Site Plan Review SP-06-2025 filed by Schroder Commercial Properties LLC to construct a 12,263-square-foot building to be located on Lot 5 of the East Melrose Business Park on Keith Parkway with the following condition: Work with regional planning to approve a landscape plan." Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning. Really, there's no discussion. I do want to talk a little bit about the parking that was brought up. We obviously understand that this is Zoned Commercial, however, this is an industrial use. Their intent is here basically is it's going to be cold storage, so there's not going to be employees in and out. Per code, we had, you know, we decided to put a restroom and stuff in there, and they are adding additional parking there. If you look at the overall picture of what they own, there is ample parking on the site. They do have a vast area in between the buildings. So if additional parking was needed, there's plenty of room to do that there. And then if this building were to ever change uses, it's going to have to come back in front of you guys there. At that point, their parking can be addressed based on that particular use. So we wanted to add some parking back there, but again, we knew that we were a little deficient, but knowing that the use wasn't more warehousing, that's why we presented it this way.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions from the commission?
Is the red line the lot itself, so that the existing building somewhat sets over the lot line, or how's that work?
This was the original, the original parcel. When Keith Parkway plat came in, they created this lot. This building addition was over that, over that line. So what we are proposing to do, and I believe the plans did show it, or maybe they did not, is they want to come back in here and they want to kind of create a parcel line. That way, that structure itself is all within its parcel, and then this one here would be parcel. So we're trying to clean that up right now as well.
Okay, would it give each building then the opportunity to have truck deliveries and truck turnarounds and so forth?
Basically, there would be, there would have to be a, if the properties were ever officially split and sold off, there would be a cross-access agreement. Where this is positioned, we wanted to make sure, because right here is their current delivery. So if the semis were to come in here, they had enough room to turn around, back up. Or if they were to come this way, they still would back up. So if the parcels were, again, were ever to be separated and split off into different ones, there would be cross easements that would need to be granted.
Okay, this is currently going to be worked in, or owned and operated in tandem with the Friends Office equipment then?
Correct, yeah. They've essentially run out of storage space here, so that's why they're putting it over here. And again, that's why there's, there's not going to be any employees. It's going to be overflow. And we do have some at-grade and recessed truck docks for deliveries and pickups.
So this will all be paved between the two sites?
We are essentially looking to pave up to the existing stone. The intent would try to maintain that existing stone, but everything on the new development would be hard surface.
So it looks like then that you would be paving 20 feet on the east side of the building, roughly?
Correct, yeah, to go up to that existing stone. And, you know, we all have to realize that when you overlay aerial onto mapping and stuff like that, it's not exact. So our survey that we presented does show the actual surveyed edge of stone, and we would be going up to that elevation.
Okay.
Location.
And you are containing all the new paving and catch basins and so forth, right?
That's correct, yeah. We're picking up all of the, all of our surface drainage wanted into our catch basins that go out to the storm sewer. As Jeremy stated, when Keith Parkway was developed, the storm sewer size was large enough to accept this water in a developed condition, and it all routes south to the regional retention facility that's down there by the tracks in the Deer Meadows Park.
As an industrial use, it would meet the parking standard, which is the proposed usage of the building. My recommendation would be, Dan, what were your thoughts about on the final site plan? Just indicating like a spot reserved for additional parking if needed in the future?
Sure, we can do something of that nature.
Wait, you read my mind. That's what I was going to say too, is just kind of show where you would accommodate it would be helpful. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak for or against this item? Again, if you're on this side, you got to stand up and flag me down because I can't really see you. Okay. Other questions, comments from staff or the commission?
Are they going to need a variance on the parking or? No. No, I'm sorry, you say they meet parking?
Staff would, I think staff incorrectly reviewed this as a commercial use. As an industrial use, the intended use of it, it meets the parking, but it's in C2 zoning, so we'd like to reserve some space in case a commercial use came in, came in and would, they could then put in the required parking for that.
Okay.
Alright, with that, I will motion to approve, let me get what this is, if I say it right, application for Site Plan SP-06-2025 filed by Schroder Commercial Properties LLC to construct a 12,263-square-foot building to be located on Lot 5 of the East Melrose Business Park on Keith Parkway.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Matt, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Muir?
Aye.
Rob Schroder? Or Rob Martin?
You're just really struggling with this today.
Jackie Martin? Dan Klinger?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're handling double duty there today.
I'm a little concerned when I'm going to be called at some point in this meeting, Matt. Alright, moving to item five. Application for Conditional Use CU-11-2025 filed by Madison Young to use the garage at 139 Monroe Avenue as storage for her business, Old Millstream Rentals. CPC staff comments.
This request is located on the south side of, skip one, I'm sorry. This request is located between 118 and 124 West Front Street.
Oops, nope.
For CU-11-2025.
Okay, this request is located at 139 Monroe Avenue. The parcel is Zoned R3 Small Lot Residential. The neighborhood is Zoned R3 Small Lot Residential. It is not located within the 100-year floodplain. The City of Finlay Land Use Plan designates the property as Small Lot Residential. The site is currently a single-family home. The applicant has requested a conditional use to operate a home business, Old Millstream Rentals. From her home at 139 Monroe Avenue, the business provides, would like to provide rentable kayaking and canoe equipment. Ms. Young would like to be able to store her equipment in the garage behind the home. Some of the materials, however, do not fit in the garage and are currently stored behind the garage. Staff would like to either see the items stored in an enclosed space or off-site. The neighborhood, the neighbors can still see the equipment if it is stored behind the garage. To limit impact on the neighborhood, staff would recommend restrictions on the business as well. Customers should have their equipment delivered off-site, and no pickup can be done from the garage. Staff would also recommend not allowing business signage on the property as another way to limit the impact of the surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use CU-11-2025 filed by Madison Young to use the garage of 139 Monroe Avenue as storage for her business, Old Millstream Rentals with the following conditions: Materials must be stored within the garage or an enclosed space. No pickup service at the house, and no business signage.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
Very good. So the recommendation from staff is, "Staff recommends approval of the application for Conditional Use CU-11-2025 filed by Madison Young to use the garage at 139 Monroe Avenue as storage for her business, Old Millstream Rentals with the following conditions: Materials must be stored in the garage or an enclosed space. No pickup service to be run from the house, no business signage." Good morning. Can you tell us a little bit about how your business operates and kind of what your desire on operations would look like at this site?
Yes, so I have structured my business to...
Put the microphone down a little bit towards you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I have structured my business to kind of umbrella event. Okay. I have structured my business to kind of umbrella event rentals. I am starting with some canoes. I don't, I shouldn't have any issue storing most everything in my garage except a canoe trailer. And I would ask what you guys would recommend as far as a reasonable enclosure. Historically, there have been trailers kept. I don't know if you can tell, but I've been told my shared driveway used to be an alley, so there's kind of a convenient back it right up area. Other than that, my business model does not generally include pickup. This would be rare if ever. I just wanted to kind of cover my back. So my business model does include delivery to the site, and I don't need any signage. So I would just ask kind of what you guys recommend as far as that canoe trailer. It's about 21 feet, I think.
Eric, can you talk a little bit about the zoning requirements of trailers on properties?
Just needs to be, trailers need to be parked on a hard surface. So I think what they're looking for though is maybe like a fenced-in area in the back behind the garage in case you do have to store any canoes or anything else out there. That way, it's kind of screened from the rest of the neighborhood.
Eric, I think specifically trailers. We've kind of recommended no outdoor storage.
Beyond the front building line in a residential area though, trailers can be stored anywhere on site as long as it's on hard surface.
Yeah, so I think really then from the zoning code perspective, unless you are storing a lot of your equipment outside and we start to have a problem with that, you really would be in compliance with just storing the trailer on the hard surface back by the garage.
Okay, two questions. I have some, a rocky area. Is that, does that, is that good enough?
Needs to be pavers, asphalt, or concrete.
Pavers or asphalt, okay. And then as far, do I also need to screen? Or are we okay with just the hard surface?
That's up to the planning commission.
Yeah, so technically, part of code, you wouldn't need screening, but since this is a conditional use for like a home business operations, we can put additional conditions on it. So that would really be up to the committee. From my perspective, I'm probably okay with trying it as long as you're not storing a lot of things out there. And then if we start to have problems, then we could recommend screening. Mainly just because unless you came and told us you were running a business and you are having a lot of stuff stored outside, we really wouldn't know if you just had a trailer on your normal property. So that's kind of where I'm at. Even though I'm not the biggest fan of trailers on properties. But I think where it's, you know, it's not super visible from the street. I don't think it's really disruptive to the neighborhood because other people clearly have items parked on their back lots as well. Comments from the commission?
Do you currently, is it just a one-car garage that you have there? I couldn't quite tell.
It is a one-car, yes.
Can you get all your equipment in there?
Not all of it, no.
So what would, what would be the type of equipment that you can't fit in there?
So the canoe trailer specifically, yeah.
No, the trailer.
I believe I could get everything else in the garage, just that trailer, it's going to be too tight to fit it all. But I have no problem putting pavers or something. That sounds very reasonable.
Comment you made earlier, are you looking at growing this business or in expanding it? Or is this, are you kind of status quo here?
I am planning on growing it. So focusing on party rentals, so it may, whether the canoes stay or go, we'll kind of see the traction and see if that's successful. I just wanted to structure it so that I can offer other event rentals. And like I said, it's, it would be a special case to see somebody come pick something up, and it would be by appointment only.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak for or against this item? Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission?
I would agree with some sort of hard surface on the trailer storage. If there's, if it's just, is it an empty trailer then?
It is a canoe trailer.
So you would have canoes on it at all times, probably?
Right.
Okay. Then I think I would probably want to see some screening around it.
Now, what kind, like what kind of screening? I guess I'm, there's a lot of types of screens. What do you guys look for?
Probably a solid fence of some sort.
Solid fence, okay. Like mesh, are we talking fabric?
Wood or vinyl.
Yes, vinyl screen.
Yeah, so typically, and zoning has like the restrictions of it. So it would probably have to be a six-foot fence for this area, vinyl or wood. So it couldn't just be, you know, chain link with mesh on it or anything like that.
Okay.
Is there a way for us to like put a check-in period on this? Because I guess I don't want her to have to spend a bunch of money to put up a fence if this is kind of a startup and in three months, she may decide that she's not going to do the kayaks anymore. Now she has a fenced-in area that she spent a bunch of money on and it wasn't quite necessary.
We can base it off of complaints. I mean, if there's a complaint or two that come in, then move forward with it. If not, I mean, you can put that condition on it.
Yeah, maybe we can just make a note to kind of drive past the area and see if there's issues.
Yeah, I mean, as a conditional use, you can, you could, you could definitely put that condition on. Like, we'll check back in a year if there's no complaints. You know, essentially, in my mind, we would drive past every once in a while, but it would really be complaint-driven.
Thoughts on that?
Yeah.
Would that work?
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I know fences are expensive. All right, well then with that, I will add the condition of kind of a note for us to follow up to keep the fence in mind. But I will motion to approve conditional use CU-11-2025 filed by Madison Young to use the garage at 139 Monroe Avenue as storage for her business, Old Mill Stream Rentals. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, Matt, whenever you're ready.
Rob Martin?
Aye.
Jackie Schroeder?
Aye.
Dan Klinger?
Aye.
Mayor Muir?
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
All right, item number five, application for alley slash street vacation AV-01-2025 filed by Ralph D. Cole, American Legion Post Number 3 to vacate the north-south alley between 118 and 124 West Front Street from West Front Street to the intersection east-west alley. CPC staff comments.
This request is located between 118 and 124 West Front Street. It measures 16 feet wide and 200 feet long. It is located within the 100-year floodplain. The applicant requested the vacation of the alley between the buildings to the intersecting east-west alley to the north. This alleyway leads to the parking lots located behind the American Legion Building and the Torpedo Building. There are a number of parking lots that are located behind the site in this block. The east-west alley from Corey Street would still provide access to the parking lots. With the closure of the alley, the American Legion would like to be able to open up an outdoor space for their events. If approved, staff would like to see some sort of physical barrier added to prohibit vehicular traffic through to West Front Street. Staff recommends, staff recommends approval of application for alley street vacation AV-01-2025 filed by the Ralph D. Cole, American Legion Post Number 3 to vacate the north-south alley between 118 and 124 West Front Street from West Front Street to the intersecting east-west alley. As a reminder, the City Planning Commission makes a recommendation along with the Planning and Zoning Committee, and City Council ultimately decides if the alley will be vacated.
Engineering?
So review this alley. We don't have any, as a city, we do not have any utilities in that alley. I'm not sure about, you know, plumbing, gas, AT&amp;T, and all that kind of stuff. But if there is, there'd have to be easements for that. But from city side, I don't have anything running up through there.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
Very good. So the recommendation from staff, staff recommends CPC recommend approval of application for alley slash street vacation AV-01-2025 filed by the Ralph D. Cole, American Legion Post Number 3 to vacate the north-south alley between 118 and 124 West Front Street from West Front Street to the intersecting east-west alley. Good morning, gentlemen. Good to see you. Can you tell us a little bit about your vision for this space?
Sure. We envision putting a decorated gate on the front and a gate on the rear, basically adjacent to the back corner of our building, which, yep, right there. And we would like to use, we have an agreement with the owner of the Torpedo Building, Mind Body Health Associates, I believe is the name of it. Basically, we have a side doorway there that, well, it's been a problem with people sleeping in there and everything else, which is one of the reasons why we're wanting to do it as well. But we'll put outdoor seating, basically from that side door to the north. We would be able to use that during the day, but in the during the day, the front part of it, we would leave open for mind-body use. And then in the evenings, you know, for our use for outdoor entertainment, outdoor table, outdoor seating.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear obviously that the neighboring property owner is on board, not just the vacation, but the plans for this area, because a lot of times people don't realize like it gets split. So eight feet of area is not really helpful. So I think that my big concern would just be making sure that you have a document that specifies that from a civil standpoint.
Yes.
From a flow of traffic area, I'm not too concerned about this because of, again, that east-west alley that does run through those parking lots, so we'd have continued accessibility. Obviously, as we work to hopefully update the bike paths and different things in this area, I think that that will, that the green space and kind of outdoor area will actually add a lot of value to this, to this area versus the concrete jungle that is currently going on. So I like the idea.
Will this be set up with like permanent things in the alleyway, like picnic tables and stuff or?
No permanence. Everything could be taken out. You know, probably in the winter months, we wouldn't much use it anyway. And the gates, basically, it measures 19 foot wide, I think, from building to building in the front. And we'll just put a gate up there, and the one in the front and the rear would be accessible anytime anyone needed to get in there.
Would you rework your parking area in any way?
Well, this kind of keys into something we want to do anyway. We are getting the parking lot repaved, I'm told by the contractor, in July. It's hard to see, but the handicap parking right now is to the rear and to the right of the building where you see the dashed lines. And we'd like to get that a little bit closer to the building, so when we repave it and re-stripe it, we're going to actually put the handicap parking directly behind the building. That's another reason why we want to vacate that alley, because right at the corner, people come down that alley and we have people circling our parking lot to leave. And that gets to be a little bit of a congested area. It's a blind spot right there.
Well, and you also have to maintain access to your adjacent building, correct?
Yes. Sean, the property owner, is here today. The, it's hard to.
Excuse, would you mind using the pointer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yep. Okay, there we go. Me and a pointer, there we go. So right now, this parking lot here is a 16-space parking lot, and we provide access via our parking lot. That's not going to change. We don't plan on doing anything with that. The rest of all this parking right here is all accessible from Main Street, and it's blocked off. And partially the reason it's blocked off so that there, people can't go rat racing through there to get to Corey Street or anything like that.
Was there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item? If you can just stand up, come forward, and you need to introduce yourself, please, and.
I'm Jennifer Griffin. I represent Fort Finley Properties. Sean, the owner of Front Street and South Main Street. I've been a part of this property for about 32 years. I represented the previous owner of this property. Fort Finley Holdings owns the, I'll have to use this. Oh, here we go. Fort Finley Properties owns this property also. We all get along excellent, the Legion and Fort Finley Properties, because we own this lot. And then, like they're saying, there's, we come through here to get to, there's 16 spots marked, approximately 18, because we do have a garage here for storage. And there's a staircase there, but we don't park in that spot, but we could park in that spot. Access to get to this spot, it doesn't work. This is lower here. That's why this property doesn't flood when there's a nice flood in Finley, Ohio, is because this is very high right here, and that elevation maybe is, I don't know, a foot and a half, something like that. There's dumpsters here. We're just real concerned about the ingress and egress. If they want to have parties here, that'd be just great. But a lot of people come in here, they come through here, and they pull straight in here. One, there's a lot of people, contractors that have, or I don't know if they're contractors, but they drive around in duly trucks and they have trailers. They come into the Legion to eat. The Legion uses our parking lot here also for overflow. This is leased to certain people, but we don't, you know, we're not, we try not to have any parking wars back in here. This is approximately 35 parking spots. This is the 18, and they've got, I don't know, 22, 25 parking spots. There's two dumpsters here that we, one's their dumpster, one's our dumpster. There's a pole here, there's a pole there. Let me get to the right spot right there. It's tight in there. It's very tight. You know, I don't know how the city works, special permits for having parties and closing off alleys from time to time. But to have that permanently closed with the development across the river and where that's all going to go, and then how this will affect some of this in here, I just think that it's not the right idea at this time. Nobody polices any of the parking because we try to all be very, very good neighbors, and we're all very close. And Fort Finley Properties, they support the Legion. We're all members. We eat lunch in there every day. But to close that off, the alley permanently forever is a long time. And I just don't think it's the right thing to do. And I've sold real estate for about 47 years in this town. And I think that needs to be rethought, you know. It's been mentioned that, well, they can just pull over if this is not, if this is too narrow through here with the beer trucks, delivery trucks, contractors with trailers, duly's. They can just pull over into his parking lot. Well, yeah, they can, but that's not the right way to think of that. We can't be driving on each other's park for that. And again, there's these posts and poles everywhere, or at least three good spots to back around and turn around. The Legion has their, when they go to the grave sites, you know, and there's additional parking. We're full. Our building is all rented. And so, you know, if you go two cars per unit at least, and probably more than that, and some have sales teams that have sales meetings, and there's a lot of parking back in there. And then the egress, ingress for any kind of a casualty that could happen, I don't know. I just think it needs to be thought out a little more, and Fort Finley Properties is all for parties and having it open. The cubby that they're talking about that's in here is a platform much like this. And there's two doors, I don't know, one, you had mentioned was for egress out of the building. I glanced at that the other day. That door doesn't fully even swing open. It hits the hood. It meets requirements, okay?
So I guess I want to understand a little bit. So first of all, if this alley were to be vacated, what they're currently proposing is building an outdoor space that just goes to the. that just goes to the back of their building, so really, from the back of their building on, that is going to be maintained as parking, and what I just heard you say is that you guys all kind of work together for flow of parking through this area anyways, and you wouldn't be able to get to your parking lot here if you weren't going across their property, is that all correct so far?
We would want to get to our parking lot.
Right.
Yes, and the reason we can't come in this way is because this is about a foot and a half higher, or whatever.
Yeah, I, I get it, so I get, I guess my point is, is that that whole area is not really gonna change any.
Right.
That area would, yes, but if you're concerned about tra, that's a pretty narrow alleyway, I don't think most of your trucks or deliveries are really going through that area to start with, they're most likely coming through that backside because it is-
I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah, well, if I was a truck driver, I'd definitely be coming through that way because the alleyway is, is pretty tight.
No, I think they come through here and make the swing so they can deliver right there.
Yeah. So, I, I think, I, I hear your concerns, I think maybe one of the things to look at-
And these posts here also, these posts, and to make that turn is, is very difficult.
Yeah, one of the things I think that if it was vacated is maybe you guys could look at, uh, you know, kind of a civil agreement, I don't know if you guys have actual agreements among each other now for access, that's what we always encourage neighbors, because handshake agreements are only as, as good as you're willing to shake the person's hand, sometimes those go bad.
Well, you can't deny somebody access to their property back here.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm not gonna get in on that one, but if, I would say you probably should have some legal, uh, agreement on going across other people's property to access your property, because really legally, I think you only have to have, you know, Main Street access. Um, so, I, I get the concern, um, obviously, there's a lot of different parcels kind of pieced together back there, and technically, again, those properties, parking lots can be accessed off of the north or the east-west easement, or right-of-way, um, where those utility pool, pools are at as well.
Was, was there, did I mishear that, my understanding was there's a shared access easement through your parking lot?
Yes, we provide them access to the sixteen-spot lot that they have behind their buildings, we've always done it.
Well-
Is there an actual agreement?
Is there an-
No, we do not have an access, but a gentleman's agreement.
Right.
We basically have a gentleman's agreement where we provide access to that, they have their dumpster on our back lot, so it's easier-
If you can come forward and, and speak on the microphone, just because we are recording, this is all on the record.
Okay, yeah, we, we basically have a gentleman's agreement for access to the parking lot, um, we provided it for, I don't know, for as long as I think anyone can remember, and they keep a dumpster on our lot, but it's all gentleman agreement, and then also, we do use that back lot for overflow when the memorial squad is, uh, meeting to, to go out to the funeral home or whatever.
Okay, so, I, I think, regardless of this, of the alley vacation, I would recommend a recorded, shared access agreement, because, and the, the law director's behind me, but I don't think there's anything from keeping you from putting a fence right here and blocking off access.
Wouldn't do that.
Understand.
Don't do that. We don't need the headaches, but-
Properties change hands, agreements get forgot, then that's, that's why shared access easements that are recorded at the courthouse are valuable.
Yeah, I have no problems doing that, and we're, we're going to, we're actually in the middle of doing a document like that in agreement with the landowner, um, the, of the torpedo building there, uh, Mind Body Health Associates, just putting in the, put pen to paper what expectations are.
Just mention that we're keeping that as a drive north of the, the building.
Yeah, well, you know, we're gonna, yeah, we're just gonna put a gate at the north side of our building, um, the vacated alley that would be to the north of the building, we have to have that open, because that's what use, works as our parking lot anyway.
Um, question for Jeremy, uh, Jeremy Calb, City Engineer, and, and others, hello? Um, I, I, I think the answer, I think I know the answer to this, but, and I don't know that it helps the situation very much, do we ever consider a partial vacation of a segment of alley? Like, if, if we, if vacation ended here, and this was just vacated? I was asking Jeremy.
I mean, you can, but I don't see what you're gaining or losing, so that's what I was just talking with the law director on, I was looking at the Otter's website, tried to figure out where everyone's access is through that, because I think if that alley, say you only vacated, you're still having to cross the Legion's parking lot to get to their property, where if you look at the properties that SML, I think it was on the Otter's website, owns, is from Main Street around, so technically, their access is from Main Street down, yeah, there, let me point, because they own this pro, and it dies out right on me, all right, they own this property, this small little property right there, and then this one down here, so really, they're accessed down through here, um, like they were saying, they got a gentleman's agreement to go down through here, because there's a great, there's a, because- Right, because you're saying there's a great difference, but, um, you know, you're using, but I think when all that was split up, it was intent to go this way, but if you guys, if, if, if it's decided to stop right here, they still have to cross this property, no matter if that alley's, if that's a roadway even, so, you know, you can stop that right there, I just don't see what it's gaining.
I think I would see it, uh, vacated the full length, and then it's up to their, uh, the two owners to maintain.
I mean, I, I agree with, with Matt was saying, even if this application was not here, and we're not even talking about this today, all those properties would need to have that kind of ease, you know, an easement agreement, if that's the route everyone is taking because of the great difference, if there's a great difference there and it's undrivable, then, yeah, you would have to have one come from here down their parking lot, and then into their back lot, so that's, that's how it should be, even if this application was not part of here. To protect, like everyone says, protect both properties.
Um, how do you currently get deliveries, I assume you have a, a truck that brings supplies from time to time?
Yeah, they, they come either way, I mean, they do use that alley that we're asking to vacate, but they also come from Corey Street as well.
But they also then still make that turn going in and out of Corey Street and in and out, out of the alley there?
Yeah, um, all of our deliveries, I, I can't say they always do, but most all of our deliveries come in the morning before, I'm gonna say, eight-thirty in the morning anyway, and there's usually no one in any of those parking lots at that time, and they, I don't know, they do deliveries however they want to, but they don't seem to have any issue.
With your current operations, uh, when you have events going on, can you handle the parking within here, or is it normally overflow there?
Quite honestly, most of our events occur either on a Friday night or a Saturday, and no one else uses any of those parking lots around there, um, you know, you've got MCPA that has their parking lot, and of course, they have, if there were events going on at the same time, that could get tight, but we usually look and see what's going on before we try to have an event anyway. Parking is not usually an issue.
This is a public lot.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Mind Body owns-
This is public, and that is public, and then-
The assigned spots in that public lot.
But only during weekday working hours.
Yep, yeah, that's, the county, I believe, owns that lot.
Yeah, is there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item? So I think I'm gonna, I will motion to recommend approval, because I think this warrants more discussion and more input from council, I see the benefit it provides, uh, but obviously also want to just think through the overall flow through this area, um, and so I would make the motion to recommend approval, uh, to council.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, Matt, whenever you're ready.
Jackie Schroder.
Hi.
Dan Klinger.
Hi.
Rob Martin.
Hi.
Mayor Mearon.
Hi, so this will, oh, go ahead.
This will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Committee at noon today, and as I mentioned, both of these are recommendations, ultimately, City Council will have free readings and discussion, uh, for the final decision. Thank you.
All right, moving to item number six, application for conditional use CU dash twelve dash twenty-two-five filed by Curaleaf OGT Inc. to establish a cannabis dispensary at twenty-two oh five Tiffin Avenue, CPC staff comments.
This request is located on the south side of Tiffin Avenue, near the intersection with Spruce Court, uh, the parcel's zone C-two general commercial, and located within the cannabis overlay district area number one. Along Tiffin Avenue, it's mostly C-two general commercial, and, uh, and also part of the cannabis overlay district. To the south, there is a residential neighborhood, uh, mostly zoned R-one, large lot residential. Um, this property is not located within the hundred-year floodplain, the city of Finley Land Use Plan designates the property as regional commercial. Uh, this site is currently, uh, well, this is the site of the former Dollar General, though you can go shop there today, but the plan is it would shut down, so, it just threw me a little bit. The applicant has submitted a conditional use to operate a cannabis dispensary, uh, from this site. The existing building is eight thousand one hundred ninety-nine square feet in size, which is, uh, which four thousand seven hundred thirty-seven square feet will be leased to the dispensary, uh, they will be required to provide thirteen parking spaces, uh, at that size, uh, which is met by the existing parking lot of twenty spaces. There is an existing pylon sign on site, staff would make a recommendation that, uh, the pylon sign be removed, and a low-profile sign be permitted if they wish. Uh, in their application, they noted they will adhere to the hours of operation, nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday, and nine AM to seven PM Sunday. Um, and I believe those standards are set by the state of Ohio, Jacob?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, in the building, there will be a vault storage area that will only be accessible to registered employees, deliveries will be coordinated to comply with state of Ohio regulations, the retail floor will also have, uh, twenty-four-seven video surveillance equipped with night vision to prevent loss or theft, cameras will also be located at all points of ingress egress into the building, uh, waste will be stored in the vault under video surveillance, Ohio has rules that require waste to be mixed, uh, with other materials before transport. The applicant indicated they will conduct waste removal from the site, uh, in a way to mitigate odor. If given approval before a conditional u- use can be issued, um, the applicant must provide documentation, they are meeting all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control. Um, we may need to discuss that statement. It's one of those chicken or the egg, they can't get approval without the conditional use from the state, so, uh, but staff recommends approval, uh, for the conditional use CU twelve, uh, twenty-two-five filed by Curaleaf, to establish a cannabis, cannabis dispensary at twenty-two oh five Tiffin Avenue with the following conditions, uh, remove the pylon sign, comply with all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control. Um, go ahead, oh, sorry.
Engineering.
No comment.
Fire prevention.
No comment.
So CPC staff recommends, I've got it here, uh, approval of application for conditional use CU dash twenty, CU dash twelve dash twenty-two-five filed by Curaleaf OGT Inc. to establish a cannabis dispensary of twenty-two oh five Tiffin Avenue with the following conditions, remove the pylon sign and comply with all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control. Discussion, welcome, hello?
How's it going?
Good, can you make sure the microphone is on and just introduce yourself real quick?
Is it on?
Yeah, there we go.
Hi, thank you for being here, my name's Jacob Thronberg, I'm the Senior Manager of Real Estate Strategy at Curaleaf, today I have Steve Delish and, um, our general contractor, Max Urban, Steve is the VP of Retail for the Central Region at Curaleaf, he manages all things, uh, on the store level and, and operationally, and then Max can speak to the technicalities of the building plans if you guys have any questions. Um, obviously, today, we're representing the applicant, Curaleaf OGT Inc., which is a subsidiary of, of Curaleaf's larger parent company, some background on Curaleaf, we are, recognized as one of the world's largest cannabis companies, we have over six thousand employees, we operate a hundred and sixty-seven dispensaries across eighteen states, and in each of those states, it is a four-wall vertical, so we cultivate and produce our product for both retail and wholesale as well. Um, we're very familiar with, with going through these municipal processes, and, um, you know, we're excited to, to join the community in Finley if, if you guys will have us.
So, obviously, one of the concerns, and I know a lot of it was noted in the application, is just kind of, what does this look like, how does it fit into the neighborhood, what does security look like to make sure that, you know, we don't have issues, can you just talk us through a little bit about how your store would operate when open?
Yeah, absolutely, and I might let Steve speak to some of those, those retail operations, we also brought presentation, that one doesn't have color, there's a little bit of color in that, that larger printout, if you guys would like to see it, but generally, the goal of, of our, our retail, and, and this will be a dual use, so we'll serve both the medical patients in Ohio as well as the recreational patients, is, is to blend with any other retail, the state highly regulates the design of these buildings, so it's not a free-for-all, we can't just go in there and, and build it however we want, um, you can look at, at that picture there, it's fairly sterile, right, there's no, no neon signs, the windows are frosted, I believe, is that right, Steve? Okay, so the windows are frosted, you can't actually see in on the sales floor, um, and then, just on a high level, you know, in terms of the store function, if you're a customer or patient, you would walk in, they would check your ID, you would then be, uh, directed to the sales floor where we have, you know, our trained staff that will help direct you and, and help you find the product that, that you're looking for. Um, highly securitized as well, again, a lot of this is regulated by the state, uh, there, it's heavily enforced, um, one, one big key factor that a lot of people have questions about is there's absolutely zero onsite consumption, and that goes for any of our dispensaries throughout the entire country, um, it's not allowed, that's a separate use, and it, it only happens in a couple of states right now, none of which we, we actually operate, but, uh, all the product is, is sealed, um, and, and again, zero onsite consumption.
What, if any, odor do you notice kind of around the store?
Yeah.
I hate the smell, so I just am ultra-sensitive to that.
So essentially, zero odor around the store, the only way that you're gonna get odor is if you likely enter the building, go past the vestibule, and maybe you could smell a, a slight hint of it on the sales floor, but really, all the product is kept in the vault, the vault is, I believe it's eight or ten-inch thick concrete walls, right, so it's very secured and, and very, you know, the smell is very contained, if you open that vault, you're likely gonna smell something, right, but again, all the product is sealed and, and secured, um, before it comes to the facility, and then after it leaves the facility as well.
Okay, my last question for a little bit, I noticed that you are only utilizing a portion of the store, do we note what the plan is for the other half?
So, we don't have a plan as of today, uh, Dollar General, this was not a building for lease, it was a for-sale option, we work with various developer and holding partners throughout the country, one of our developer partners entered into a purchase contract, and, you know, subsequently signed a lease with us, um, so, they're gonna purchase the building, we don't need all the space, it gets to be very costly and, and unused, and unused space, um, so, so we, we really just try to build it out as efficiently as possible, uh, we will leave room on the other side of that building for a co-tenant, and that co-tenant would obviously have to, I, I would imagine, come and appear before you guys and, and, you know, certify the use, but it's, it's unknown at this time.
Thank you. Other question, Mr. Law Director?
I, just for clarification, wh- whether it's part of the state rules or not, um, your style of store is where you would enter, but you're not in the product area store yet, it's, it's where your ID is scanned?
Steve, is there a separate vestibule here, I don't know if you want to come up and, and speak to that.
Hi, uh, Steve Delish, so, the way, uh, the, uh, DCC works is they've actually, you enter into the building, you go through a check-in area where you scan your ID to actually enter the facility, it isn't an enclosed vestibule, you actually are on the, the, the sales floor at that point, um, but there's no product that is on the actual set, retail sales floor, everything is still behind the back of house. you know, cabinets within the vault and in our day storage. The only time that cannabis will actually come into the sales floor is when it's purchased and that transaction completes.
So the consumer doesn't touch anything until they are actually making the purchase? There's not display racks? It's not like going into an ice cream shop?
Correct.
At Deez's or something?
We do have displays, but they're all dummy packaging. So just empty boxes to display the units of what they come in, but there's no actual physical cannabis product.
I keep comparing it. I like the Deez's comparison, but mine is like a jewelry store. Right? It's kind of more contained, examples out, but you really have to work with a salesperson to be able to get your hands on anything.
That's right.
Okay.
So you mentioned your organization does cultivation, growing as well as retail? This is just retail here, correct?
This is just retail for this site. We do cultivate and produce throughout the state of Ohio, though. So, you know, we hold that license as, you know, that allows us to do so.
Does everything come in to your facility prepackaged?
It does.
And I assume there's multiple types and varieties that come in? Are those packages sealed?
They are. Yes, sir.
You mentioned in the vault that you would have some aroma, some smell. Is that vault ventilated at all?
Hey, my name is Max. So yes, vault, it's ventilated. And we basically have just a supply line, not a return line for the vault. So we're just injecting air.
You say you're injecting air?
Correct.
Okay. Would that odor create any issues in the neighboring buildings?
No.
Is it...
Basically, no open flower in the facility. Everything is prepackaged, so it's super minimal smell.
Okay, so the ventilation is just for your own comfort level?
Correct.
There's no breaking up of the packages and dispensing of it or anything?
No, so all of the packaging is vacuum sealed in containers. If it ever is broken or... We do have, I guess, a destruction SOP where we'll actually destroy the product, but that is held in the vault. And it's kept in a locked smell-proof container until we go through the destruction, which we... There's a whole SOP around it, but it's implemented with soil, hammers, mallets, to basically destroy the product. And then that is still kept in the vault in the smell-proof container until the trash pickup comes. We have a dumpster that's a locked dumpster that will put it out for trash pickup that day.
Okay, is that part of the... Where you... Says here you can conduct waste removal in a way to mitigate the odor. So you're mixing... You're mixing the... Any waste that you have for whatever reason, I guess. And that reason would be a broken package or something, or...
Yeah, broken package, expired product. We have a certain date of expiration. So if we ever do have, which is rare in this case, but if we do have expired product, it would go through the destruction process as well.
So at that point, you are handling the product inside the vault area, mixing it with something else?
That is correct.
Breaking it down or...
Yeah, it's... If it's flour, for instance, it's grinded down to basically dust and then introduced with soil.
And that's still in a container, enclosed? After you do that, I mean, you have... You're physically doing that in the vault?
Yes, we have a table in the vault that, according to the DCC regulations, we have to do it under camera, a certain time period that it takes place. And then that material is moved back to that smell-proof locked container in the vault.
Okay.
So you asked the question I was gonna ask. But it's interesting to me that... I'm learning here. So a locked trash dispenser? And then is that regulated by the state? Or do you take that to one of your other facilities that actually dispose of it or repurposes it, or how's that work?
No, as soon as it's rendered with the soil and introduced and grinded to that, it is rendered useless at that point. So it is locked in that container and it's taken away by the trash facility.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak for or against this item?
We did receive one email from... And I believe Jacob passed that along to you. It was from the neighborhood to the south. And they were against the dispensary citing the proximity to the residential neighborhood.
The state doesn't regulate how close it can be to residential, then?
No. I did have a question. What would be like your ideal co-tenant? I think my concern is that it's Crazy Eddie's Wild Bong Shop, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you have a restriction on how you look.
Right, right.
I wouldn't want the co-tenant to be something like that, that's unrestricted.
Yeah.
And I don't think you want that either, but I just wanted to have this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there are some undeniable synergistic uses with those types of co-tenants. The problem is, as you were talking about earlier, a lot of these vape stores or these smoke shops that you have here now are selling, I'm not gonna call it illicit product, but it's labeled differently, right? And it's essentially kind of the same product. It's gonna give you the same effect. So we're moving away. We don't really see that synergy as much anymore because those guys make... It's a big part of their business, selling that. And it obviously conflicts with what we do. So I would think someone like a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, somebody that can fit in 3,000 square feet and obviously doesn't have an issue with what it is that we're doing. Again, even that co-tenant would not have any smells leak into their unit. And I think we said here we have 20 parking spaces, but we actually designed the site plan to have 29. So we're utilizing some middle space there to increase the parking.
How big is this vault gonna be? Is it 10 by 10, or is it... Yes. 500?
Yeah, it's 548 square feet.
Okay, but so a small two-car garage, roughly?
Do we know about... How large is this green space buffer along Spruce? Yeah, so there's like a small strip of grass area between the roadway and the parking lot? Do we have an... I'm guessing it's probably like six, eight?
Five, six feet.
That's what I was kinda guessing. Okay, I just was thinking... I was just thinking about, you know, if we could do some additional landscaping buffers, just again, trying to create disconnect from the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Obviously, again, there's not use on the property. So I really look at this as a commercial operation. As you brought up, you know, this is a flaw with the state law, in my opinion, with the smoke shops being able to... Because there's this Delta 8. Is that what they're selling?
Delta 8, Delta 9, DCA, 100 things.
And I think that that's more obtrusive and technically could go at this location as well, under our code. So I just... I think that that's something for consideration as you go into the neighborhood, is if there is space enough without... Because there might be some utilities through there to be able to put some additional trees or shrubbery while also keeping sightlines. I think that should be considered. Yeah, Jeremy?
All right, so I just measured it for you on Google Earth. So take it as what it is on that. The grass space in between right there is about eight feet. And then from the edge of roadway to... There's a fence right there, which would be roughly the property line, because that is a mound back through there. That was roughly 17 feet. So to give you an idea of what that separation distance is off the roadway.
Yeah, and so there's the mounding plus green... Their fence, mounding, and greenery before Spruce. We have about 17 feet, then the area. And my concern is I don't think you'd be able to put too much in that area except for maybe trees that would have to be upcut up a little bit because of sightlines.
Is that right-of-way, that grass? Do you guys know? I don't know if that's technically a part of our parcel, or that may be...
I think this back here is part of right-of-way. And then this right here will probably be right-of-way as well. So about where that red line is, is pretty much where your parcel will start. And then I think where this right-of-way is, is about where that black line, you know, give or take a couple of feet because of how the image is.
Yeah.
But that would all be within roadway right-of-way.
Yeah, we're happy to put some shrubbery there. I mean, guys, look, we really wanna be a contributing member of the community, right? Like, we want people to enjoy having us here and support the business. So if that would, you know, please, the neighborhood to the south, we're happy to do it.
Other questions or comments?
You mentioned you had security cameras at strategic places and night vision on that. And is the night vision a requirement by the state then too? Or is that something you're doing?
I don't know, Steve.
Yeah. It is a requirement by the state. So we cover every inch of the building. It's required to... You know, there can't be any, you know, hidden areas from the external part of the building as well as the internal part of the building. And we have alarms, you know, across motion sensors as well as panic buttons at the POS, lanyards that our associates carry as well.
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, I'll make a motion as this approval of the application for conditional use CU-12-2025 filed by Cureleaf OGT... OCT? Sorry, I'm one of my cheaters. To establish cannabis dispensary at 2205 Tiffin Avenue with the following conditions: Remove the pylon sign and comply with all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Matt, whenever you're ready.
Rob Martin?
Aye.
Jackie Schroder?
Aye.
Dan Klinger?
Aye.
Merrim Yern?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven. Application for conditional use CU-13-2025 filed by True Leaf Ohio Inc. To establish a cannabis dispensary at 1501 West Main Cross Street. CPC staff comments.
This request is located on the south side of West Main Cross Street, between I-75 and Emma Street. The parcel is Zoned C2 General Commercial and is located in the Cannabis Overlay District. To the south, it's Zoned I-1 Light Industrial. It is not located within the 100-year floodplain. The site was formerly guaranteed Auto Dealer of Finley. The applicant has submitted a conditional use to operate a cannabis dispensary from the site. They intend to use the existing building, which is 3,080 square feet in size. They will be required to provide nine parking spaces for their size, which they... Which is met... Yeah. They're required to have nine parking spaces. And obviously, as a car dealership, they have many, many spaces. The applicant will be installing 37 shrubs along the foundation of the building. The site does have a grass strip between the site and the neighboring parcel to the west, the Pilgrim Restaurant. Staff would suggest adding some shrubs, if possible, to help provide better separation between the two parking lots. There is an existing low-profile sign on site, which they intend to repurpose. Staff would note that the applicant will not need to work with the zoning department to get approval for the sign. Did I say not? The applicant will need to work with zoning. In their application, they noted their hours of operation will be 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Like the previous item, the applicant has indicated they will be providing surveillance and appropriate waste removal methods in accordance with the state of Ohio rules. If given approval before a conditional use permit can be issued, the applicant must provide documentation they are meeting all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control. Again, for both of these items, I believe they have submitted that by showing that they have permission from the state. Staff recommends approval of conditional use 13-2025 filed by True Leaf Ohio Incorporated to establish a cannabis dispensary at 1501 West Main Cross Street with the following conditions: Comply with all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
The recommendation before the commission is staff recommends approval of application for conditional use CU-13-2025 filed by True Leaf Ohio Inc. To establish cannabis dispensary at 1501 West Main Cross Street with the following condition: Comply with all requirements from the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? If you could come forward and please introduce yourself? Go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Greg Grossby. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Good morning. My name is Jim Warnock. I'm Executive Director for State Expansion and the Real Estate Team for True Leaf.
Thank you. Well, you heard kind of the last line of questioning. So can you just talk to us a little bit about your operation and plans for this site?
Great, great. So, you know, to start off, we do accept the staff report. And in general, the Cureleaf folks did a great job, you know, stating what the requirements are for businesses, for dispensaries in Ohio. I noticed that our hours of operation are a little bit different, but the state permitted hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so we fall within side that. Otherwise, Jim, if you'd like to discuss the operations of the site and maybe a little bit about the company?
Sure, thank you. So True Leaf, we're vertically integrated company. We operate in nine states currently. We operate over 229 dispensaries and have over 6,000 employees. For our dispensary operation, questions previously were answered correctly. I would add that you have to be 21 years or older to enter the dispensary. We do check IDs at the door with a manager or an associate. And then we also check it again as you go into the sales floor. Similar to Cureleaf, our product that may be displayed on the sales floor are empty. It's just packaging. No live product is on the floor at all. It's in the vault. And all packages sealed. And it's childproof, tamper-proof, as per the state regulations. We are similar. No consumption of product on the site. And our dispensaries that we operate throughout the country, we never see that as a problem. We also have... Last thing, we also have 24/7 surveillance with security cameras. And we do our own in-house security. So it's not a third-party group. We have a National Security Director at our corporate office, and we have locations across the United States that monitor 24/7 all our locations. Cultivation, production, and our dispensaries.
And I would add to that, that that security is 360, both inside and outside the building. So all areas of the building, other than the restrooms, are monitored by cameras. All areas outside the building in a 360-degree radius are monitored. There's no loitering allowed outside the building, either before or after a transaction. The other thing I would add is that about 40% of all cannabis transactions at dispensaries in the state right now are made online. So people make those. And then they're given a time at which they can show up at the dispensary. So that somewhat moderates traffic at any of the dispensaries in the state. People are given a time, and then they come. So, you know, we don't see a huge glut of people, but as noted, there's plenty of parking at this site, so it really doesn't affect the site.
Okay, you actually brought up an interesting thing that I've not thought about. I believe in Michigan, I've seen billboards for cannabis delivery. Is that something that's legal in the state of Ohio?
Not permitted in Ohio.
Okay. I was like, ah, wait a second. Okay, and am I correct that our ordinance stated timeframes? Or did we not have that? On the previous... On Cureleaf, it said per ordinance, our timeframes were like nine to nine and...
I don't believe we have a timeframe in our ordinance.
Okay.
You mentioned that you're removing the parking along the Main Street there. You're not rem... Or Main Cross. You're not removing the asphalt, I don't suppose? You're just not utilizing that parking?
No, we are not removing the asphalt.
Okay. Do you have a vault situation similar?
We do, and we comply with all the state requirements.
Okay.
Similar-sized vaults, et cetera.
Ohio has the most stringent regulations of any state. So, you know, these facilities tend to be very safe. You know, in fact, because of the cameras around the facility, oftentimes, law enforcement will come to the facility and ask to see the camera footage. If there's, you know, a car accident or theft or some kind of incident in the area, they will use the camera footage that we have. And, you know, we fully comply with requests like that.
And your operation is very similar to what the previous one was? Or everything is... is prepackaged, it's, you're not opening packages, you're not mixing, you're not, everything's disposed of in a similar fashion?
Yes, it's all regulated by the state. What I will add on security, I failed to mention previously, was we, if you notice our elevations, we have a film on the windows. That is for two purposes. One, it allows the workers inside the facility to see out in the parking lot, but the guests or pedestrians, say, walking down the street in front of a building cannot see in.
Right.
And so it's, our facilities are designed and treated more like a medical facility, than, I know you mentioned other shops, and, you know, vape, et cetera. So we have a whole different feel and a style as we, you know, treat the guests and patients as they walk in our facility.
Just wanted to note, we did receive a letter from the orthodontics, orthodontist office, and they were strongly opposed to the idea of the cannabis store.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak for or against this item? One thing I just, so, the monument sign, right, is what we're looking at doing here. I like the shrubberies, I again, would just look for opportunities to do any sort of tree plantings, different things on this area. You have a lot of asphalt that's now gonna look very empty, especially since, you know, it's been a car dealership, so I just, I'm always looking for opportunities to add green space and plantings.
Yes, we can comply with that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from staff or the commission?
Quick question, on the elevations, you're showing a fenced area around the one corner, is that a delivery area? Or what is that area for? The fenced area here around the corner?
Um, which side of the building? Let me look at the site plan real quick.
Southeast corner?
Yes, that's for the delivery side, correct.
So, just for your knowledge, deliveries are handled, they're not scheduled all at the same time, so people can't depend on when a delivery's going to be there, they're made at random times. The delivery staff is trained security, they're highly skilled at this, and, you know, they pull into that area, deliver the product, and leave, and, you know, there's heightened staff on the inside waiting to receive the product, so that's all an efficient and quick transfer.
And where is the dumpster enclosure planned on this property? I don't see it on the site plan.
That was one of my questions too, and also going back to the previous one, we didn't talk about, are we required to have a dumpster enclosure in this zoning classification?
Yes.
Okay.
That is something that, if you would like to make that a condition, that we work through the location and enclosure requirements for a dumpster, we're willing to do that as a condition to the approval.
Yeah, that definitely would have to be in, with our code, it does have to be enclosed and, you know, try to match the building aesthetic.
Sure.
I was trying to look at, because obviously I'd prefer it not be towards the main roadways, but with your secured fenced area, I think that that might be a little difficult. So I guess I would, I'll add that, the condition of the enclosure with proper screening, and then to work with staff to also add some landscaping around that. And I know we didn't add it as the condition on here, guys, but make sure to do the same thing, because that is the code requirement.
There's no landscaping currently between the Pilgrim Restaurant and this one, that little lawn strip, I don't believe, but that's something you suggested?
That was in the staff report.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it'll, it'll be tough to find some hardy, hardy plants that can survive the asphalt sandwich that they would be in.
Yeah.
So, I would love for there to be items, but at the same time, I'm not sure if they would.
Dead plants look worse than no plants.
That is correct.
Yes, Eric?
So I was looking through the street view just now, and I don't recognize any monument signs, so you'll have to work through my department, and we'll get you situated with that.
Sure.
Other questions or comments from the commission, or staff, or the audience? All right, with that, I will motion to approve conditional use, CU-13-2025 filed by True Leave Ohio, Inc., to establish a cannabis dispensary at 1501 West Sandusky Street with the conditions of meeting all state cannabis requirements, as well as adding a garbage enclosure that meets code, and work with staff on landscaping.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any final discussion? Hearing none. Matt, whenever you're ready.
Jackie Schroder?
Aye.
Dan Klinger?
Aye.
Rob Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Murn?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Also, then, we should go back, should, do we need to go back and make that trash enclosure issue on the?
It's technically part of the code, so they're gonna have to meet it.
It is technically part of the code, so we don't need to do that.
Okay.
All right, seeing no other items, this meeting of city planning is adjourned. Thank you.
My name's Lou Will, I'm Jacob. That's what I wanted to get, one thing, your name is Jacob?
Jacob, J-A-C-O-B.
All right. J-A-C-O-B, and then what's your last name?
Thromberg.
Okay, and your title?